If I could have your attention, please. I'd like to welcome you to our September the 12th, 2019 council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is getting the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present in the council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. Please silence all of your electronic devices. With that, I call this meeting to order. We'd like to begin with our invocation. It will be shared tonight by Pastor David Nye from Christ Our Savior Fellowship Church. Could you please stand together and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. Most gracious God and heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that we have received, not only today but throughout our entire life. Lord, I pray for and I ask your blessing upon these council members as they deliberate, discuss, and debate issues that are facing the city of St. Cloud. I pray that your wisdom would be imparted upon each of them as they vote on items that come before them this evening. Father, we thank you for blessing our city, for blessing our state, and blessing our nation. We pray you will continue to do so, and we ask this in the precious name of our wonderful Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
We do not have any proclamations this afternoon, but we do have a presentation by OUC.
Terry Torrens, Orlando Utilities Commission. My address is 6003 Pershing Avenue, Orlando, and I'm here to present to you our community sustainability report. And so I have a couple of things I want to give you, and I'm just going to hit the highlights, and you guys can move on for regular purposes.
Thank you. If you'll get that, Madam Clerk.
Yeah.
One of the things that we wanted to do was just make mention of our hurricane, Dorian, was really something that we were seriously concerned about as we all worked together, both the county and the city, and the electric utilities, to make sure that we were all safe and prepared. And so we were very pleased with the outcome of how we put everything together and the good communication that we had. So we had a good bit of resources that we brought in in advance of the storms to make sure that we had put everything together in a professional manner to make sure that we were ready. Thankfully, we didn't have to deal with that, and seeing what we're seeing coming out of the Bahamas, we're really blessed that we dodged that bullet. So we're really thankful for that. This community responsibility report is, it's our first year in doing this particular report, and what it really does, it's focused on our sustainability and customer initiatives that we are doing and the commitment in the central Florida area. What we're currently doing is there's two major things that are going on. One is we're diversifying our energy portfolio. So as the industry transitions to incorporate more renewable energy and generation sources, we're working on something called the Electric Integrated Resource Plan. And so we're in the process of reaching out to our stakeholders, finding out what's going on out there, and looking at incorporating a lot of the new technology into our generation fleet. OUC is on track to increase its renewable energy portfolio to 15.7% of our retail sales. We're currently at 8.8%. We have a very big solar project that's coming on in the not-too-distant future, and that's kind of one of our big projects that we're super proud of. I don't have a whole lot of details on that for you right now, but that's going to be coming along, and it's going to really be able to really boost our renewable portfolio in the intermittent generation portfolio. We're also looking at expanding our alternative water supply. So one of the things that we're currently doing is we're doing an exploratory well in the kind of northeast portion of St. Cloud. We're looking at going into the lower, lower Floridian for an alternative water supply, which is very helpful for our customers. We serve over 400,000 water customers in the city of Orlando, so we are very forward-thinking when it comes to that kind of stuff. The other thing that we're really working heavily to do is we're adding in a lot of smart grid technologies along with our traditional distribution infrastructure. And what that does, it enhances our reliability and responsiveness. We got to put a little bit of that to the test during Hurricane Dorian. It's not deployed in all areas, but it's kind of working through that process. And so what it does is it gave us the opportunity to leverage these tools, including utilizing our outage alert system. And what that does is it allows, it notifies our customers that we know that there's an outage in the area, that we're working on it, and it gives us the opportunity to be able to notify them that we're working on it, we're responsive to it, and that we are able to respond to it in a very timely manner. Other items of note, our community outreach document focuses solely on the partnership with St. Cloud. That's the yellow document that highlights the partnership and our commitment to City of St. Cloud, its employees, its customers, and the rate competitiveness. A contract committee meets on a quarterly basis. As you know, some of you guys attend that meeting to discuss operational, environmental, economic, development, and financial issues, to ensure to make sure that we're providing outstanding service and delivering unsurpassed value in the St. Cloud area. So basically, what I just wanted to do was just kind of give you that 50,000-foot view of some of the things that we're looking at in the community, some of the other things that we're talking about, just to kind of put it on your radar, as we've got some new transmission that we'll be having to go in to service some of the Narcoussi Road area. And so we'll be talking to you guys about siting for that in the future. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm here to help.
Does anyone have any questions?
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Have a good night.
Appreciate our partnership with OUC. This brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not in this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided by the presiding officer prior to as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. We ask that when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Ms. Hewett Crumpler.
My name is Hewett Crumpler. I live on Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. Phone number 407-906-8826 for anybody who wants to talk to me about any city business. I'm happy to hear from you. I'm going to start out by just putting a chart up here on my update request. I'd be interested in hearing the update on the coal ash leachate issue. The attorney that was hired to process used any due diligence that we went through. The chemical testing firm that was hired or engaged or will be, any discussions, meetings involving any parties since the last time there was a public meeting on this topic? I'd like to know what the update is on the 17th Street sidewalk project, when the completion date is expected, progress that was made. I'd like to know when the ADA website will be completed on our city website, and I'd like to hear if there's a possible, an update on the possible purchase of the Hastings Farm. Thank you.
Do you want one thing at a time?
I'm happy to do however you want.
We'll ask our city manager.
However you all want to do.
Sure. Mr. Sturgeon.
Well, would you like us to respond? I'm just asking the council's direction.
I'm giving city manager. Do you want to handle number one?
Well, on the, to address what's specifically on the screen, on the agreement with Waste Connection, with the council had authorized the city staff to advise them that they were prohibited from putting leachate into the city system, that has not changed. They are not putting, they're not disposing leachate on it. An attorney has not yet been hired. We've been initiating that process. I do not think that any chemical testing firm has been hired. We have had no discussions with Waste Connection since the last action that was taken by the city council on this. However, they have asked for a meeting, and there is a meeting set for tomorrow to discuss potential options that they think that they might have to address it. So I can't give you any more information on that because I do not know what they're going to propose, if anything. But of course, if they do propose something that requires further action by the city council, we will bring it back to the city council if we think it's appropriate.
Thank you.
17th Street project is still in engineering, supposed to be completed by January. We expect construction in April, should be done by June of next year. The ADA website, we're still working on those issues. Again, we're not the only city that's struggling with that, and we're continuing to do that. We'd hired a consultant to do that, and Veronica has some more information. She's waving back there. So I'll let her, if I could just continue on. Hastings, the Hastings Ranch, we've actually contacted two state-certified appraisers to do an appraisal before we make any kind of offer or talk about it any further, till we have an appraisal.
Do you want Veronica to talk?
Mr. Mayor, if I could have Ms. Miller? Yes, sir.
And before she comes, just to further what Mr. Sturgeon said about the Hastings piece, it's not just state-certified appraisers. The council, as the council knows, the city is hoping to apply for some grant funds through the state to pay for the acquisition of, so it requires there are specified state-approved appraisers for these grant processes. So we had to work with a limited number of appraisers to do that. We have reached out to two in the central Florida area, one in Kissimmee and one in Orlando, and we'll hopefully get them on board as quickly as possible to get this done.
Thank you. Veronica, would you like to address the ADA website completion?
Good evening, Veronica Miller, deputy city manager. I wanted to address that our website is currently ADA accessible. We have gone through and removed many documents and uploaded new documents that have been converted to be ADA accessible. The document center is full of them. There are many documents that we're not going to have the ability or the time or the money to go through and update. So we've asked staff now to go through each of their pages and take some of that important information that wasn't a separate document and incorporate just that data straight into their page. We do have the videos currently ADA accessible. You have the ability to watch past videos through our YouTube channel, links on the website. And additionally, we are working through the potential purchase of some additional software with the city clerk's office to possibly redo our agenda software that we recently did, so that we could have ADA-accessible city council agendas on the website and also have that link to the specific portion of the video playback. So in the future, if a city council member wanted to go back and click on only the video pertaining to a specific resolution, rather than having to watch the entire meeting, we would be able to click that specific resolution and just watch that part of the meeting. But we are currently ADA accessible. We have all of our information available. The only item right now is just moving forward with the city council agendas.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Veronica. I don't have time to address that tonight because I've got very limited time, so I will talk about it another evening. But I am going to spend my time on the coal ash leachate issue. I don't know, when's the attorney going to get hired and when will the testing firm get hired?
If you recall, we had a hurricane right in the middle of this thing.
I do. That was, we've had three weeks, and I give you one for the hurricane.
So, you know.
I understand, Bill.
I know you're joshing me. Yeah, we're actively working that, and so we'll meet with them tomorrow and see what they want to do, some kind of settlement.
Well, here's my thoughts on that. Your meeting and Mr. Manzares' meeting with these people about the contract tomorrow?
That's correct.
Well, if we had the attorney in place, I'd feel a whole lot better if they were meeting with those people.
We have an attorney.
I'm just saying, yeah, we have an attorney, but you don't want my opinion on how he's handled this situation. Because I think, I think a first-year law student could have very easily addressed some basic issues here, like the intent of the contract. When the city signed their contract, there was an intent, all right? Basic contract law. I would say that Dave's son, who's probably in law school, could probably help us out here with the idea of intent. The county changed that, and it changed the intent of the contract without any notification, without any opportunity for the city or the citizens to give input. I don't think that's appropriate or legal. That's an opinion, not a legal opinion, but a citizen opinion, first of all. Second of all, I think that the liability that the city and you all have, we all have, for anything that's happening at that site is grossly underestimated and not really addressed properly. Because we have a tremendous risk here that's not being properly addressed, and I think if we had an outside firm to handle that, it would be much better. I also think that if we have a hurricane, we're lucky we had the mist that we had. If we had a hurricane, a real direct hit, does anybody here want to talk about what they know the effect would be on that waste site with the toxins that are in there and where they would be spread far and wide? What? He won't let you do that.
No, you need to wrap it up, Ms. Crumpler.
Yeah, I understand, Mayor. But the possibility that we will get a hurricane, it's just when, not if. And that risk is very real to all of our citizens. I know you all said, and I believe you, that you care about the drinking water. That is going to be there whether we have a hurricane or not, the effect on the drinking water. We need to understand, as Mr. Cooper and others said, what the effects are. We need proper testing. We need a real environmental attorney to come up and take the slack here, and we need an absolute sense of urgency. We can't be delaying on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpler. I'd just like, you know, it's really inappropriate to applaud and to speak from the audience, and so just please keep that in mind. We will listen carefully to you. We will not interrupt you, and we ask that you please maintain proper decorum and not make statements out from the audience. Thank you. Michaela Wells.
Hello, Michaela Wells, 940 Mercury Drive, Hollapaw, 34773. I wanted to thank you one more time for your vote last week, showing that you put our health in front of money and that you're standing up to the landfill, no matter what kind of threats they're putting out there. Also, I wanted to address the hurricane. We got lucky, it missed, but it didn't look like it, and it could have been a five, category five. And we have made many calls, we have sent many emails, gotten one response from one of the commissioners. I didn't personally email you guys, but pretty much anybody else. Nobody responded, and the one commissioner that did said, well, it's a DEP issue, contact them. DEP said, in reference to how the landfill is preparing for the hurricane, all they said is it's in their best interest to act accordingly to their permits, whatever that might be. They didn't want to go into any details, but the fact is that nobody is looking into this landfill. There are videos, there were Facebook messages on buying water, boarding up your windows. We know we need to do that. Why isn't anybody addressing what the landfill is or isn't doing? If this would have hit us, it could have really been a disaster out there, especially for the people with the well water. And while I understand that the landfill is a Class 1 landfill and is technically allowed to take coal ash in, we don't need to discuss that the landfill should never have opened because it's simply location-wise at the wrong place. But it is there. It's a constant risk, and it needs to be handled accordingly. Leachate and everything aside, it is a threat with storms, sinkholes, whatever else might happen, and we need the government to get involved because it's a private company. And we called, we knocked on their door as fast as they let us in. We emailed, and they don't care what we think or what we're worried about, no matter how close we live to where they are. So we really need everybody's help in the city and in the county to help us address things when a threat like a hurricane is around the corner. And also, an issue is that I just wanted to bring up that the Puerto Rico coal ash is here, which is not obviously a city issue necessarily, but it's a statewide issue, that Florida is allowing coal ash from other places outside of Florida to come here. And I think we need to write into law that Florida is no longer accepting coal ash from anywhere else, and that also needs to be updated in any city and county contracts with the local landfill, that from now on, we don't take any outside coal ash anymore, and preferably from nowhere, because this is not the right place to have coal ash. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Laura Tweed.
Good evening. My name is Laura Tweed. I live at 2808 Mead Avenue, St. Cloud, 34771. I would like to say at the beginning, thank you for standing up to the leachate issue. The one thing that I did meet with a couple people here in this group, being sued for $4 million from a private landfill, what are we up against? And what is this meeting going to be about tomorrow that concerns me? Bob Baucoc and Aaron Brockovich, if any two people in the United States has experience with this type of an issue, would be those two people. So I did reach out to Bob Baucoc, and he did offer experience to you guys, and they were willing to talk to you guys. I think you're missing the ballgame by not calling Bob Baucoc for experience. Aaron Brockovich and Bob work well together, and they've been dealing with issues like this all throughout the U.S. Not only in the U.S., but they deal with things worldwide as well. So I think they offered a world of knowledge, and no one took up on that offer, and I think that's kind of sad, because they could have given us some, you know, insight to some of the things they've dealt with in other places. The change in St. Cloud itself, I used to come to St. Cloud as a child. I rode horses here, I used to go fishing. The number of cases in sickness right now in Osceola County and in St. Cloud proper, the city, is alarming. I'm working on this stuff. I'm doing it as a power of one. I need a team, so I'm looking for volunteers to help me with this process. If St. Cloud has the opportunity to impact what we're dealing with and has a moral obligation to put the health and well-being above profits, we would like to see that done. We need us, as a team, to lean on people with experience to help us get through these problems. We live in a world of toxins and contaminants. I don't understand why people in this world put greed and money above health. Without health, we have nothing. As residents of Osceola County, we would like to thank you for standing ground on the leachate issue, but also realize our nearby neighbors in Lake Nona are experiencing high levels of TTHM, trihalomethanes. That happens when the water is cleansed with chlorine. And nearby Lake Nona, they are experiencing these problems, and if it becomes too high, they switch to chloramines, combo of chlorine and ammonia. It becomes toxic and very cancerous. Brevard County is currently undergoing the same issues with this problem, and Aaron Brockovich and Bob Baucoc have been involved with it heavily. I'm just saying Lake Nona's our next-door neighbors, and they're experiencing these problems, and if I'm not mistaken, when I lived in Lake Nona, I had OUC for my water source. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tweed. Michael Leyla, did I pronounce that correct?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mike Lawler. I live at 2423 Regent Way, Kissimmee. First, thank you for continuing to address the concerns of the citizens of the city of St. Cloud and those nearby like myself. I have attended or observed many community meetings through the years, and three weeks ago was my first time I was at the city of St. Cloud. And it's because of that meeting and the way you went to bat for your citizens that I'm proud to say, I'm proud of this city, and I stand by you with countless others in this coal ash leachate battle. Thank you. I'm here to speak about a bill that's going to be presented, a bill that's been written, and I'm here to say that I back this bill 100%. When I read this bill, I immediately saw the vision of the intent of this bill, a bill that makes sense to all concerned citizens, a bill that says the state of Florida will take care of whatever mess they make, says the coal ash is toxic, but if we generate in our state, our options will be distorted here while we look for alternative, cleaner ways of producing our electricity, but not take from out of state. Now, recently, many other, recently, many other states have been ordered to empty their online coal ash ponds. So with a little research, it is easy to envision just how much coal ash will come here without this bill in place. This bill was so well-written that the city of Orlando has already commented, "It's a fantastic idea. It should not be controversial to leave toxic waste from entering our state simply for the sake of profits while jeopardizing our community health and natural resources." For those of you who are unaware, the city of Orlando is focused on going to 100% renewables for their municipal buildings by the year 2030, and the entire city will be on renewables by 2050. They are the leaders to get this state to where we need to go. They are powerful supporters, and we are asking you, the city of St. Cloud, to join the fight to protect our resources. Thank you.
My name is Ariel Hartney. My address is 199 East Cedarwood Circle, Kissimmee, Florida. The uproar over coal ash and coal ash leachate being dumped in our community is sincere. We're not making it up. We recognize the failure of EPA to appropriately regulate coal ash as a hazardous substance as solely to encourage disposal in mixed solid waste landfills rather than online surface impoundments. Choosing between the lesser of two evils does not mean coal ash is non-toxic. We don't think accepting coal ash from out of state is appropriate for Florida, a state with a growing population, increasing habitat loss, karst geology, propensity to develop sinkholes, and dwindling drinking water resources. We have a bill we've written that we would like the city of St. Cloud to take up as a legislative priority for the 2020 session.
Just give them all to the clerk, and she will distribute them. Thank you, Ms. Hartney.
Kat Dar, 6799 Chad Jason Road. I, too, would like to know why the city council attorney has not hired an attorney, an environmentalist. Just a small suggestion. Earth Justice might be something you might want to look into. Attorneys from Earth Justice might be able to help you make this decision. I also would like to put this paper up if I could.
May I maybe talk up here?
I know it's kind of hard to... I know it's kind of hard to see that, but these are all, all of the chemicals, toxins that are in coal ash. I don't know if any of you have ever really looked it up or even saw it, but these are a lot more than what we have on the coal ash page.
Yes.
Okay? I can't really let you keep this, but this is a well test. I can't show it to them.
If you show it to us, then you have to leave it here to be part of the record.
Okay, I got you. I have a well test, okay, that shows one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 toxins that is in this individual's well. How much more do we have to explain how dangerous this is? And I too would like to know what this meeting tomorrow night is supposed to be about. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dara. Valerie Anderson?
Hi, guys. Valerie Anderson, 714 Kentucky Avenue. So thank you so much for handling the leachate problem with grace and integrity. I really appreciate that. We're really lucky to have you guys. And I know you guys didn't solve, you didn't, you did not create this problem. The coal ash was not your fault. It came in from, from out of state and the county approved it. However, you can be part of the solution. So I'm still learning about the legislative process, but I watched the mayor present at the last legislative delegation for the 2019 session and the city has interests in the legislation. You have audience with legislators. So I am perfectly capable, we are perfectly capable of finding sponsors for bills and getting things to the floor, but we would really appreciate that you would look at this bill and adapt and adopt it as a legislative priority because we still have coal-fired power plants in the state of Florida. We're going to keep having them. We're not going to switch them off overnight. But because the state of Florida currently has a statutory moratorium on hazardous waste landfills, but as you know, coal ash is hazardous, coal ash is a waste, but the EPA and therefore the DEP do not consider it to be a hazardous waste. That's deeply unfortunate and something I would like to solve in the future. But a very basic first step, while we're still producing coal ash in the state of Florida via our coal-fired power plants, is to not take other states' messes because other states such as North Carolina, as Michael alluded to, are cleaning up their messes and they're looking for cheap places to dispose of it. And you know which states have really low, uh, per pound fees for, for trash? Well, Florida has really low per pound fees for trash. So, um, I would really prefer that our county or even other counties not be the path of least resistance for future coal ash, uh, future imports from out of state. So Ariel already got you the bill, so you guys are good and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Valerie. Terrence?
Yeah. Everybody can talk about coal ash first before I go.
Coal ash is done.
Unfortunately, I'm not here to talk about coal ash, although I should be. I just wasn't aware of the situation right now tonight because I've had other things to deal with. I'm here to talk about destructive driving here in St. Cloud. I'm here to talk about the accidents I've seen and witnessed and the fact that I'm tired of it. A month ago, my coworker, her son was killed by a destructive driver. You might have all read on it. It was in the news. David McGrin, young man, 39 years of age, out with paralegic veterans of America with about 200 other riders out by the airport. He'd come back from Iraq. He survived a horrific auto accident. He was a para, I mean, he was a, uh, hemiplegic. He had a special bike made for him. He was going to the paraplegic Olympics, it looked like, two years from now. Distractive driving. And I'm, like I said, to the point, you know, I like seeing St. Cloud police around. I like seeing them writing tickets. Maybe I'm the only one. I'm tired of driving on Narcouzi Road and I kind of like push it. I'll do 50 and I'll have some truck constantly coming up behind me who I can't even see his bumper. His lights are right in the back of my window. And I'm tired of it, that people go 70 miles an hour, 60 miles, while texting and on the phone. It's the only state in New York where I come from, doing that is three points on your license and a $350 fine. And I'm tired of it. And if anybody wants to know why I'm tired of it, one in every four accidents in the United States is caused by either cellphone use or texting. Okay? 390,000 injuries, automobile accidents, were caused by cellphone and texting. One in every four accidents, 390,000 injuries and 600, I mean, 6,900 deaths. We need y'all to be out there and vigilant, especially our St. Cloud Police Department. We are growing in population. We're seeing more and more accidents and the only line of defense we have is our law enforcement. So I don't mind it. I just wish y'all would set back a little further because everybody's, you know, you can see the police department down the road, no problem, with a radar out. And I think we need more unmarked cars and I think we need more enforcement. And the sheriffs should be involved in this too. I mean, I was in an accident one time on, um, and we've had two people killed at my intersection, at Tompkins Road and Narcouzi. This is a real problem, especially on New York Avenue. How many times I pull out here and I see an accident right in front of the Ford? So I'm sorry I distracted from the coal ash, but I'm tired of seeing people go to the emergency room. I'm tired of seeing people killed. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Wrap it up.
Okay.
We share your concern and I'm sure the police department does. Would anyone else like to speak during the citizens forum that hasn't spoken? Not that brings us to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Does anyone on the council here have a concern about any of the resolutions? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any of the items on the consent agenda? Ms. Crumpler?
I just have a general comment that goes back to the ADA thing.
Is this on the consent agenda though?
Yeah, this is about the consent agenda. When you look, because if you look at, if you're looking for details on the consent agenda, where would you find them online is my question? That's a question. Because in the past, you could find all that, you know, it was in a book and it was online. I'm asking, is there a plan for have these details of the full agenda online? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my understanding that we will be able to...
That's what Mrs. Miller suggested here, that the staff's working to making sure that those documents could be on the, on the website. That's part of the whole process.
Can they come up here and tell me? Maybe Mrs. Miller could help address that issue. I appreciate it here too. Thank you.
Hello again. The city clerk and I have been meeting with the current vendor that provides our agenda software package and they told us approximately two weeks ago that they had no intention of making the final product ADA accessible and that if we are interested in an agenda package that is fully ADA accessible, that we needed to look at one of their other options, which as you know, we just implemented this current agenda software, which is a little frustrating for staff. So the city clerk is doing a great job of working with them and trying to get them to give us a bit of a credit and, and work out those details on what we would need to do to again now endeavor a new agenda software program. So we were just notified that they have no intention of, of making their current one. If we want it ADA accessible, the final output, that's the only choice we have. Right now, the work, uh, that the city clerk's office has done, anyone who wants the agenda package, if they contact her, she emails them the entire package. So the shell is on the website and the shell is ADA accessible.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Would anyone else like to speak to the, any item on the consent agenda? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion from council member...
Trace.
Trace and council member Cooper. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
The next item is public hearings. If there's no objection from the council, Ms. Thacker has requested that item number 12 be continued. She's asked for a continuance to October the 24th. I'd like to make a motion that we grant that continuance.
Second.
Have a second.
Mayor, if you could, we'll need to read it into the record since it's been continued to a time certain.
I'm sorry.
That's right. You can, the motion can stand the way it is. We just have the clerk read it.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please read item number 12 into the record?
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-11, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning, assailing district of PUD, planning unit development, compatible with existing commercial future land use designation for approximately 104.8 acres identified as Neptune Village. Located south of Neptune Road and west of Okunoo Creek Road, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map, following the planning commission's recommendations and proof of publication servability and effective date.
We have a motion from the mayor, a second from the deputy mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for continuance to October the 24th?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you'll please read item number one.
First of two public hearings for resolution number 2019-168R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final ad valorem tax millage for city of St. Cloud for fiscal year 2019, 2020, the same being adopted, adopted prior to the adoption of the final budget for said period.
Ms. Clazo?
Good evening. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Uh, resolution number 2019-168R, as per Florida statute, 200.065, two public hearings. This is the first of two, um, in order to adopt a final ad valorem tax at 5.1128. Um, this is a 7.87% above the rollback rate of 4.7398. The rollback rate, as everybody knows, is the same tax dollars excess as the previous tax year, not including any new construction. This ensures the increase in taxable values for the existing properties and are considered for the ad valorem tax. If there are no questions or any questions, please feel free to ask them.
First of all, I'd like to ask, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Set your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening. Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I have a fundamental question, which is, did this group consider at all lowering the ad valorem rate? Was there a discussion and what was the, the highlights of that? Thank you. Because as I understand it, you've got about 17% more budget this year than you did before because of the increased property values. So I just wondered if you considered that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to ask the question or address this issue? Mr. Mayor. If not, Mr. Cooper. Thank you. I did, I did ask that question and I asked, "Mr. Surgeon, it's about a million dollars?" Yes, sir, that's correct. When I asked you the rollback question? Yes, sir. It would be a reduction of... It's about a million dollars rollback. I did ask that. Continue, Ms. Clazo.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Clazo? No.
And I apologize, the next slide would have demonstrated what the final ad valorem tax was covering at the rate of 5.112, uh, which is actually a 9% increase in personnel and outlining those positions as well as the 3% cost of living raise. Included in that is an 8% increase in medical insurance, which the city absorbed for its employees and of course, public safety and union contracts, which had a cost of 998. So that spreads out where, uh, the millage rate would cover that. The ad valorem rate here, 3%, is just following, uh, the cost of 420,000 and breaking it out to give some transparency as to where this is going, uh, in public safety, roads and streets, parks and rec, and then general supports, which was actually a reduction of $98,781. Staff recommends approval and like I said, again, I can open it for any other questions following that information to you all.
Since you didn't have that information, if anyone else would like to speak to this item for the audience? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by council.
And you know, Mayor, this is the first of two public hearings. This isn't final action. So really, at this stage, all you need to do is make sure the public, of course, if you have any questions, but you not have to take action on either one of these first two items on your public hearings. You just have to hold the public hearing on them. Final action will be taken at the second public hearing on these.
So we're not voting on these?
You do not need to have a motion to vote on these right now.
Is there any other discussion here, council? No problem. If not, we'll move to item number two. Ms. Court?
First of two public hearings for resolution number 2019-169R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final budget for the city of St. Cloud for fiscal year 2019, 2020, the same being adopted following the adoption of the final millage rate for said period.
Again, good evening. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Resolution number 2019-169R, uh, Florida statute 166241. This is a requirement for the adoption of the budget. This is the first public hearing out of two. The amount available for taxation and other sources, including balances forward from prior years, are being reported. They must equal, of course, the total appropriations for expenditures and reserves, which is, in simple layman's terms, we've got a net zero budget. As much as we take in, we take out. In other words, uh, the adopted budget must, must balance. Moving forward, here is an outline for you of the budgeted revenues for the 2020 fiscal year. Total revenues in millions, that's 168.7 million dollars. We wanted to give you a visual graph of where the sources of revenue are coming from and I'll highlight some of the highs. Top three here, fund balance at 15%, 24.7 million dollars. Ad valorem taxes at 7% with 11.8. Other taxes grab $25 million at 15%. Licensing and permits at 4.4. Of course, 52.9, charges for services at 31% and miscellaneous at 13 with a 22.1 million dollar rev. Revenue in millions, the same amount, 168.7. To give you a little bit more in-depth of what 168.7 holds based on, uh, the budgeted revenues here and where they're coming from, the general fund holding 31% of that at 51.5. Special, special revenue funds, excuse me, are at 33.9, that's 20% of the budget. Debt service fund at 3%, 4.7 million is what that equates to. Capital projects at 6.6 or 4%. Utility funds coming in and covering 61.6 million dollars, that's 37%. Economic development and CRA and internal services all coming in at about 1, between 0 to 4%. Fiscal year 2020 expenses in millions, again, we are net zero at 168.7 with 20% of those coming in from the reserves at 33.9 million dollars. General services coming in at 10.6 million dollars, that's 6% of your budget. Utilities coming in at 24% of the total with 39.5 million dollars. Public works at 13.1 million with 8%. Parks and recs... Parks and recs, as you can see, 4 percent at 6.7 million dollars. Debt service is 5.4 million or 3 percent. And economic development is at, excuse me, I lost my train there, at 1.5 with 1 percent. Other transfers are included at 21, 29.1 percent at 17, sorry, 29.1 million at 17 These budgeted expenses at 168.7 are categorized as well like revenue into the general fund, special rev, debt service, capital projects, utility funds, and economic developments. The largest of the pie, to save everybody some time here, obviously, is 31 percent at 55 point, 51.5 in the general fund, 61.7 million or 37 percent in utility funds. And then, coming in third at 33.9 percent or 20 percent of the budget is econo, special revenue funds. General fund balance for the fiscal year 2020, we wanted to give you a back-to-back comparison in the last three fiscal years between the actuals, the policy and then projected goals for fiscal year 20, where you're looking at policy set, of course, at 12.5. We are currently at 12 and a half. Our goal, of course, is to reach the 15, 15 percent, or, I'm sorry, 30 percent goal. We're well way in tune to get over there. We're actually at 20 percent for fiscal year 2019. Any questions at this point?
Any questions from staff or from council?
Okay. Final staff recommendation is for approval. Again, just stating that it's, it is the first public hearing out of two.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this?
I'd like to know what the acronym...
Ma'am, you've got to come to the, to the podium and identify yourself. For the record, thank you for your understanding.
My name is Laura Tweed, 2808 Mead Avenue, St. Cloud. Just for the record, I'd like to know what the acronym CRA stands for.
Community redevelopment. Community redevelopment.
Agency.
Agency, right? Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Do we have any discussion by council? You know, I would just like to say, I think everyone on this council would, would be delighted to cut our budget. But we have been trying to catch up for the last couple of years on salaries and staff and personnel that we're way behind and underfunded. You know, we funded a salary survey, we funded a minimal raise for our staff. This particular budget steps up to the plate and helps them with their medical coverage. And we just can't keep losing and having a revolving door on our staff. They need to be taken care of, and they are certainly not overpaid. We have certainly gone and tried to, to a better job funding what we do with our fire and our police and hiring new staff and qualified staff that is needed and being able to keep them here. And so, that, that's been my concern with this budget. Would anyone else on the council like to speak to this? If not, we have heard it. Let's move on to items three, four, and five. Would you read those together?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-31, in accordance with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 1.85 acres identified as Mr. Car Wash, located east of Orange Avenue, south of East 10th Street, west of Crawford Avenue, and north of 13th Street, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter 171.044. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-32, in accordance with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of commercial to approximately 1.85 acres identified as Mr. Car Wash, located east of Orange Avenue, south of East 10th Street, west of Crawford Avenue, and north of 13th Street, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-33, in accordance with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of HB Highway Business, compatible with a commercial future land use designation for approximately 1.85 acres identified as Mr. Car Wash, located east of Orange Avenue, south of East 10th Street, west of Crawford Avenue, and north of 13th Street, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication, severability and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. The case before you is for Mr. Car Wash for a voluntary annexation. The subject property qualifies for annexation under Florida State Statute, section 171.044. It is contiguous and reasonably compact, and it is enclosed on all sides, so it's an existing enclave. It is compatible with the surrounding areas, and there are no adverse impacts to city The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management to create a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through collaborative planning. DRC and staff have reviewed this request and recommends approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval based on the 16 findings of section 3.4.3C2A of the LDC and recommended approval. And likewise, it is requested that City Council approve ordinance 2019-31 for this voluntary I'll move on to the next item. This is the concurrent comprehensive plan amendment for Mr. Car Wash. The applicant is requesting to change the land use from the county's designation of low-density residential to the city's designation of commercial. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff also reviewed this request and recommends approval. Planning Commission recommended approval based on the 16 findings of the same section of the Land Development Code. As such, it is requested that City Council approve ordinance 2019-32 for this comprehensive plan amendment. Next is the concurrent zoning map amendment request. The request is to change the zoning from the county's designation of RM-2 to the proposed city classification of highway business. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. It meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management. Staff also reviewed this request and recommends approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval based on the 16 findings of section 3.4.3C2A of the Land Development Code. And it is requested that City Council approve this item also with the approval of ordinance 2019-33 for the zoning map amendment. These are all the requests combined. This completes the presentation. The applicant is present tonight, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Do we have discussion and/or motion by council regarding? Any discussion first? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So, I said this on the first reading, that I really appreciated the aesthetics of the, the car wash that was presented to us. But I want to just kind of save for, on the record, and see what the other council feels for this. There, like, nothing in these approvals that we have today, though, obligates them to build what they showed us. So, I'm hoping, you know, the rest of the council will join me and say, you know, I'm hoping staff can, you know, make sure that the intent of what was represented to us actually happens. So, you know, get consensus from everybody on that. But I had a couple comments on it. Like I said, I appreciate the renderings, they were great. I was excited about the aesthetics of it. I want to make sure we look into the sighting criteria to not back the cars up onto 192 because, you know, the car wash that's over by me in love bug season, the cars literally are stopped out on Neptune Road, like, dead stop on Neptune because they can't get in and they can't circulate on the, on the property. The other thing is, and I talked with staff about this, on some of the graphics, I couldn't 100 percent tell, but it doesn't look like everything is back a house. So, when we do the sighting standards, I'd love it if we could put the building up front and hide all the, the business in the back, you know? Like, where all the, the vacuums and all of the various things to kind of like screen it with the building. And I think that kind of helps with the aesthetic. And I think that was it. Yep, that was it. I, I really appreciate the, the renderings. I just know, like, nothing here obligates them to build what they presented to us. But unless we, you know, kind of all say together, we're expecting to see what was on those graphics. That was it.
Would the applicant like to speak to this?
Rachel Meyer, 6744 New Independence Parkway, Winter Garden, Florida. If you, sorry, sure. If you notice the site plan, which unfortunately I don't have in front of me, the building does face Earl O'Brien, and the backs are in the back. And for queuing purposes, that's why the entrance to the car wash is off of Earl O'Brien, and a key, there's a drive lane up and before you hit the pay stations, and then you leave onto Crawford. That was purposely done for stacking, so there's no cars backing up for your concern. So, as far as, like, seeing anything?
Yeah, we, she just, we were looking at one of the graphics that, that we had, and it looked like you could see some of the stuff in the...
Well, because I think the pictures you were looking at of, of their overall building, if you looked at the site plan, it shows the backs in the back and the building in the front.
Yeah, we were just... Perfect. But yeah, I, I appreciate, I think it looks very nice. I think that's a great addition.
And we have no issue with you putting some notation in there that whatever elevation we present it, that's our Gen 1 building, so that's what's going to be built.
Councilmember Askew?
That was exactly what I was going to ask. Can we put some kind of notation in there that we can utilize the graphics you gave us, and that's what you're going to build?
Yeah. The color elevate, yeah, that's not a problem.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions by council? Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, and if the council wishes to do that, which you can do, there's a provision in the, in the code for what's referred to as restrictive rezonings or zonings. So, you would, that item would be included in the zoning portion of it, which is the last of the three items that you're looking at.
Okay.
You could address it. The way it reads in the code is, you can't make them do that, but they can agree to do that, if that makes sense. And that's what you just heard from the applicant.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Anything else, Mr. Ramirez?
No, sir, thank you.
If we look at item number three, final public hearing for ordinance number 219-31, what is, could I entertain a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number four, ordinance number 219-32.
So moved.
Have a motion from Councilmember Cooper.
Second.
Second from Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number five, ordinance number 219-33, with the provision that the conceptual that you shared with us will be adhered to.
So moved.
How does that need to be worded?
Well, any chance we have a date for that plan? You want to just leave it up to staff to make sure that...
I mean, they were the graphics that were shown in the last council meeting, should we say.
But you know those plans usually have a date on the bottom, that's what I'm kind of...
It wasn't a plan, it was just like...
It's a concept.
Sketch.
Concept sketch.
Renderings.
All right, we can work with that. We can work with that, yes. Based on the information that was presented at the last, at the introduction of the ordinance.
You got it.
We got it.
Okay, got it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cooper, you have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Councilmember Matheny? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I'd like to ask our clerk, if you will, please read items six, seven, and eight together.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-36, in accordance with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 1.67 acres identified as Lot 32 Hickory Tree Road, located at the northwest corner of Hickory Tree Road and Old Hickory Tree Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-37, in accordance with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land, land use designation of commercial to approximately 1.67 acres identified as Lot 32 Hickory Tree Road, located at northwest corner of Hickory Tree Road and Old Hickory Tree Road, providing for amending the official phone, official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-38, in accordance with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of NB Neighborhood Business, compatible with commercial future land use designation for approximately 1.67 acres identified as Lot 32 Hickory Tree Road, located at the northwest corner of Hickory Tree Road and Old Hickory Tree Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication, severability and effective date.
Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is a request for Lot 32 Hickory Tree Road for a voluntary annexation. The subject property qualifies for annexation under section 171.044 of the Florida State statutes. It is contiguous and reasonably compact. It is adjacent to city limits to the south. It is compatible with the surrounding areas, and there are no adverse impacts to city The request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff have reviewed this request and recommends approval. The Planning Commission also recommended approval based on the 16 findings of section 3.4.3C2A of the LDC. It is requested that the council approve ordinance 2019-36 for voluntary annexation. The next item is the concurrent comprehensive plan amendment for Lot 32 Hickory Tree Road. The subject property has an existing county future land use designation of low-density residential, and they are requesting to change it to the city designation of commercial. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. The request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff reviewed this request and recommends approval. The Planning Commission also recommended approval of ordinance 2019-37 based on the 16 findings of section 3.4.3C2A of the LDC. And it is requested that City Council approve ordinance number 2019-37 for a comprehensive plan amendment. The next item is the concurrent zoning map amendment request for Lot 32 of Hickory Tree The existing zoning is E1, which is the county's designation. The request is for the neighborhood business, which is the city's zoning designation. It's compatible with the surrounding areas, and it has no adverse impacts to city facilities. The request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff reviewed this request and recommends approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval based on the 16 findings of section 3.4.3C2A of the LDC. And we are requesting that City Council approve ordinance 2019-38 for the zoning map amendment. Again, here is the list of all the applications that we are presenting, and the applicant is available here, is present here tonight, and staff is available for questions.
Would the applicant like to speak? Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is April Fisher. I'm with Fisher Planning and Development. Um, sixty-seven fifty Bay Shore Drive, St. Cloud, Florida, three, four, seven, seven, one. Um, to be brief, we do concur with staffs and the Planning Commission's findings and recommendations. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. Um, if you, you know, want to know any specifics about why we filed the application for the neighborhood business. Just to recap from the first hearing, uh, we want to be sensitive that this is a residential area and there are limited support commercial services in that area. So the neighborhood business restricts the types of uses to non-intrusive support commercial. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Do you have any questions from? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Do we have further discussion and/or motion by council?
So moved.
Going to item number two nineteen thirty-six.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper. Do I have a second?
Second.
From Askew. Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Under item number seven, ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-seven. Do I have discussion or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Askew, second from Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number eight, final hearing for ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-eight.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Mr. Trace. Councilmember Trace?
Second.
Second from Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Very good. Item number nine. Madam Clerk?
Final public hearing for ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-seven. An ordinance to the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida amending the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida to amend Table three dash seven Commercial and Industrial Uses, Article Two, Definitions, Article Three, Division Two, Establishment of Districts, District Boundaries and Zoning Map and Restrictions on Land, Water, Building Structures, Article Three, Division Nineteen, Sign Regulations, Article Three, Division Twenty-nine, Open Space and Recreation Districts Providing Perseverability, Conflicts Codification and Effective Date.
Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. The case before you is for the Open Space and Recreation Zoning District. Um, we are amending the Land Development Code through ordinance twenty nineteen dash two-seven. This is the second and final hearing. What staff is proposing is to add a zoning category that is appropriate for the parks and other open space areas. The proposed district is consistent with the park and open space future land use category. Several of the permitted uses must follow siding standards and it adds signage regulations consistent with the existing requirements for parks. This request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management. Staff and DRC recommend approval. And the Planning Commission recommended approval with the condition to remove the gun range use, which was done. And it is recommended that the council approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash two-seven for this LDC amendment.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Do we have discussion and/or motion by council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Mr. Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Please, we're going to have items ten and eleven.
Final public hearing for ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-eight. An ordinance to the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida assigning a future land use designation of o, park, open space to approximately 127.99 acres identified as Chisholm Park, located at forty-seven hundred Chisholm Park Trail, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication, applicability, and effect severability copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-nine. An ordinance to the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida assigning a zoning district of OR, open space and recreation compatible with park, open space, future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-eight for approximately 127.99 acres identified as Chisholm Park, located at forty-seven hu, hundred Chisholm Park Trail, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map following the Planning Commission's recommendations of proof of publication severability conflicts on file and effective date.
Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. This request is for a comprehensive plan amendment for Chisholm Park. This is the second and final hearing. Staff is proposing to change the existing future land use from institutional, which is the county designation, to the city designation of park and open space that was just approved. The allowable density will be point three of floor area ratio and it is compatible with the surrounding area and the existing park use and will have no adverse impacts to city facilities. This request meets the intent of the strategic plan goals for growth management, infrastructure, and public service. DRC and staff have reviewed this request and recommend approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval based on the sixteen findings of Section 3.4.3(c)(2a) and it is requested that City Council approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight. This is the concurrent zoning map amendment for Chisholm Park. Staff is requesting to change the existing zoning from the county's designation of institutional to the open space and recreation designation for the city. It is compatible with the surrounding area and the existing park use and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. The request meets the intent of the strategic plan goals for growth management, infrastructure, and public service. DRC and staff have reviewed this application and recommend approval. The Planning Commission recommends approval based on the sixteen findings of Section 3.4.3(c)(2a) of the LDC. It has requested that City Council approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-nine for the zoning map amendment. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to these items? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I have a quick question. In previous business before this council, um, a request had been made, Bill, to take a piece of, I don't know exactly where on the map it is, but a small piece of this and take it away from the Chisholm Park and provide it to, um, three residences. The City of St. Cloud voted against it, you guys, and you wrote a letter to the county saying you were not in favor of that. My question is, what was the outcome and is that included in this map? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I don't remember. She's talking about the vacation of Lake Shore, that portion of Lake Shore that the City Council directed staff that the city was not interested in the county moving forward with vacating that portion of it. Um, that's not part of this.
It's not part of this? But wasn't it part of, originally or no?
Well, the, the removal of that public right of way is not part of this. So that would be still part of the, uh, the, the, uh, public right of way for that area.
Forgive me for being dense, but I just don't understand. What was the outcome of that and, and is there any effect on this?
No action.
No action. We didn't do it.
Okay, and it's not affecting this at all. Thank you so much.
Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item?
Valerie Anderson, Sanford, Kentucky. Um, thank you, finally. Much appreciated. Um, so anyways. Uh, you know how I feel about the, the horse place, gross misuse of public land, but, um, I really appreciate you moving forward with the open space and park zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? We'll, uh, ask for discussion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Dunklin, on, can you go back a couple exhibits on your map where you've showed the property in purple and then there's like a hatch? So what's the, the unhatched? So the two hundred and seventy acres, what, what was it in here? Or sorry, one hundred and twenty-seven point nine nine acres is the hatched area? And what is the unhatched area? And then my second question is for the audience. I know when this came up the first time, I had talked with staff in my agenda review. Okay, when are we gonna do all the other parks because they all don't have the right zoning? So if you could speak to the timing and fixing that as well?
I'll let Trevor Bedford, um, address those two questions.
Good evening. Trevor Bedford, Senior Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. The purple hashed section is currently the part of the park that is annexed into the city limits. It's just showing that it currently still has a county zoning district. The unhatched portion is the Heavenly Hooves, the equestrian facility that is not currently owned or annexed by the city.
So the one twenty-seven point nine nine is the hatched?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the other parks, um, we will, we will be moving forward with them. Um, I, I don't have the, the exact timeline, but now that we have the open space recreation zoning district, we are able to move forward with them.
So what's the process for that? Can you do, I mean, is it simple? Like you can do them all in one in a swoop or do you have to bring them back individually?
We should be able to do them all at once. Um, we'll, we'll look at it a little bit more in the future to, to just confirm that, but I think we can do it all at once.
Okay.
Anything else? Any other discussion from council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to approve item number ten. Ordinance number two thousand ten dash twenty-eight. And I don't know who did what.
Mr. Cooper.
Mr. Cooper, did you make the first motion?
He seconded.
Pretty close.
He.
I have Askew made the motion.
Askew, Cooper.
Askew made the motion. Cooper. Mr. Cooper made the second. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings aside number eleven, ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-nine. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper and a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number twelve has been continued to October the twenty-fourth, which brings us down to council action. Item number one, Madam Clerk?
Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-five R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida approving, approving a loan known as a local government area opportunity loan for Madison Grove LLC in the amount of five hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty to fund the development as an affordable elderly apartment project in the City of St. Cloud and providing an effective date.
Is there anyone here that's gonna speak to that?
I just want to speak for a second if I could.
Yes, sir.
Again, I just wanted to talk about the agreement we are putting before you tonight. And first off, the loan amount is five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's gonna be paid at a three percent rate and not to exceed six months at certificate occupancy. So we'll let you know that. It's an interest-only loan. The second, the security is a second mortgage lien on the Madison Grove development. And again, it's an early loan payback. If you compare that to what we did initially, it was eighteen years, so we've got it down to six months. And I, I think that's more palatable and I recommend we loan them the money.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
I think Mr. Bannock's here to do a presentation.
Is he here? I'm sorry. Is the applicant here?
I'm here.
I'm sorry.
Good evening. Stacy Bannock, five fifty-eight West New England, Winter Park. Uh, we are the, uh, development company for Madison Grove. And, uh, I have a presentation here just to kind of go through the project because I know there's some new members and that maybe aren't familiar with what we're proposing. So I'd like to just go ahead and go through that now. Okay. So, uh, as a development company, we've been, um, doing affordable housing for over twenty years. Um, we are a for-profit development company. And, uh, ARC is a big advocate of, which is American Residential Community, is a big advocate of fifty-year land use agreements. So these projects remaining affordable for fifty, you know, we're, we'd be okay with longer, but fifty-plus years is the, uh, minimum requirement by Florida Housing. The, I included some, just for you guys there, uh, some, some, some bios on, uh, the development company, who we are. Uh, this is a list of the projects that we've built. Uh, the picture you see there is the Towers of Madison Crossing. Those are two phases. But you can see we've built over twenty-two hundred, uh, units, all affordable housing. Uh, the project details on this is fifty-five and up affordable seniors. The project, if, if you are familiar with Madison Crossing, is gonna be, you know, very, very similar. Total property between lots five and six is four point two acres. We're proposing anywhere between seventy and eighty units. That'll be dependent on the tax credit rate and what we can do. Uh, this project will have surface parking and, and again, it's a seven-story post-tension concrete building. You know, our goal is to build, uh, a product that's gonna last. It's not gonna have to be in twenty years, tear it down and redo it all over again, building a wood product. I have, um, income details here if anyone is interested in looking at that. I guess I could just ask you if that's okay? If you like, I can go through what the rents are. You may be familiar with it or not. Uh, our one bedrooms and two-bedroom rents, I'll just go through it real quick for you. Ten percent of our units will be, uh, for extremely low income. They're gonna be for the three, thirty-three percent area median income. And then the ninety percent of the units will be for the sixty percent area median income. And the rents there, these are, uh, set by HUD. Every year, these rents and the one bedrooms for the extremely low income will be, the net rents after utility allowances would be three fifty-two. For the majority of the units, which is, again, the ninety percent of the units, they'll be at seven hundred and four. And then the two bedrooms for the extremely low incomes will be four twenty-two. And the two-bedroom, which will be the majority of the units, will be eight forty-four. Those are the rents set for the two thousand nineteen HUD rents. Um, we will have special needs units. These units basically are extremely low income units. Ten percent of the units will, of, of our total units will be extremely low income. And fifty percent of those will be for special needs. Osceola County has three referral agencies. They have the, uh, Osceola Mental Health. We have the Homeless Network of Central Florida and the Community-Based Care of Central Florida. And they're a, a referral agency that we will get our units from that meet those special needs. And we will have to hold our units for thirty days until those are leased up before we can lease them to anybody else. So this is a Florida housing requirement. They require that the special needs units get taken care of first in your lease-up. The location map, I think everyone's familiar with where this is. Uh, and there's a conceptual site plan for the first phase. We would like to do two phases. Um, currently we'll only be applying for the single phase right now. And if we are successful, we will go in and apply for the second phase. Some of our developer, development features and amenities. You know, for our projects, this is typical what you would see, uh, carded, secure entries. Uh, we have elevators, of course, in all of our buildings, washers and dryers. We actually provide them for the tenants, not just hookups. Uh, Energy Star rated. We have full-size, you know, uh, kitchens with Energy Star rated appliances. Uh, health, I'll go through some of the, the, uh, pictures of, which is coming up next here, uh, of our development. Couple of them, which has, you know, arts and crafts room, the theater room. We have all different types of amenities listed there, you can see. Resident services, uh, our, our building will be, uh, registered and certified at NGBS, which is the National Green Building, uh, Standards. It's very similar to LEED. I'm sure people here are LEED a lot and everybody's familiar with that. Our residents will have access, uh, property, to property management or some type of a support for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If there's any problems, uh, with urgent issues, they can get ahold of our, either management company, or, excuse me, our, our manager or our maintenance supervisor. Uh, we offer a couple of different, uh, resident services as well for the, uh, tenants. We have onsite supervised daily activities. Uh, some of them, as an example, we have over at Madison Crossing, are sit and sip in the morning. We have crafts. We have movie time, pool exercise. We have board games, lots of different activities for them. Uh, we also provide with, uh, light housekeeping grocery shopping for the tenants. And then we, uh, we have an established system where every day, because they are seniors, the average age in our apartments are about sixty-nine years old, that we have a daily check-in for each resident. And these are all, of course, for no extra charge for the residents. And then I'll go through the pictures here from some of our previous developments. That's Madison, these will be Madison Crossing. Uh, this is our. This is our Phase One. We call it the Blue Building. And we have Madison Crossing Phase Two, the Red Building. And then these are just some pictures of our amenity areas. This is actually Madison Heights. This is downtown Tampa, pool area. It's a second floor pool deck. We offer, for the seniors, we have shuffleboard courts, you know, the pool amenities, barbecue grill area over in the back there. And then just some kind of interior pictures of some of the common area spaces. This is our activity room, where in the mornings they watch TV, play bingo, whatever it is, they have a sign for the day. We have a billiards room, game room. This is our theater room. Exercise facility. It's kind of limited because of unfortunate, because of lawsuits, but can't use treadmills anymore in the affordable housing. Okay, I have some development costs. I'm going to go over through this. The land cost would be $1 million for tracks five and six. Our construction costs are estimated to be about 13 million for this project. And our total development cost would be around 19 million. The loan requested for $560,250. And I'm going to go through the quick terms here for you. City manager kind of went over. But the loan, 560,250, we would not need the loan funded until the issuance of certificate of occupancy. And the loan would be paid back within six months of that CO date. And we are proposing an interest rate of 3%, payable monthly, interest only. And as was mentioned, it would be a second mortgage lien on the property. And then the project benefits, the elimination of the liability to the city as far as having to pay the CDD payments and the taxes, increased tax revenue on this project, job creation and the additional stock of affordable housing in the city. So that's all for the presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Excuse me.
You need to come and ask the council a question, please. Come step to give us your name and...
Okay, my name is Terrence Lyman. I'm from 5013 White Water Way, St. Cloud, Florida, of course. And two weeks ago, I was with Controller Singh at his annual meeting over in Orange County in which he had 3,000 realtors show up and insurance agents. One of the things he brought out, the fact that $2 billion that was slated for elderly housing was taken out of that fund and put into other funds by the state. We wouldn't have to be giving out loans, okay, if the state just did its job and took monies that were first slated for elderly housing, okay, and senior citizens and affordable housing, instead of stealing it and putting it elsewhere. Mr. Singh asked for us to take an active role in stopping the state from doing this. I am a member of the Lake Donut Chamber of Commerce. I've already drafted a letter and sent it to the Lake Donut Chamber of Commerce, asked for that, asking them to help approve it, get the signatures on it. And then I'm actually going to be seeing you people soon with that same letter because I'm tired of these funds. We wouldn't have to be giving, co-signing on a loan or doing a loan to him if those monies were left in the state treasury, where it's supposed to be designated for. Also, one other question. How far is this of a walk for seniors? So one big problem here in St. Cloud, you know, they build these places as affordable housing and it's a 10-block walk to the local supermarket or, you know, grocery store, let's say 10 different stores. They built this thing up here on 192, those two tall centers. And all those old people have to cross that highway. Doesn't make any sense. The only, you know, the one behind Walmart is good. And there's another one behind the Publix up on the left-hand side. But how far of a walk is it for the other amenities that the seniors need? Oh, okay, how far of a walk is it? Is it walking distance?
Mayor, if he wants to finish up, then we can get this question.
Finish up and then we'll address your question. Anything else you want to ask?
Oh, I'm finished.
Thank you.
I'll be looking for your signatures in about a week.
All right.
Two weeks.
To address the question, I don't have, I do have the available, I could get you that information directly as far as the walk to the community services. This project has to meet certain requirements of Florida Housing to meet those requirements. It's a point system that you have to score. They want to have community services nearby around for this affordable housing. There is a Walmart, if you're familiar with, you know where the property is located? So there's a Walmart, and I don't know the exact distance, but it's just to the south of the property. It's a super Walmart, so it has a pharmacy in it, has a grocery store, which are important amenities for both of our, you know, for elderly. And there's a medical facility not too far from there. So we do have, we have looked at this. I just don't have, I wasn't prepared to bring those numbers with me exactly. But there are the facilities in the area. Walking distance, you know, majority of our cars, we have historical data for our properties. We generally, about 70% of our residents have vehicles. So the other 30% either use, you know, transit or carpool or, you know, they have other services that they call. So that's, we can answer it right now.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Lord, 2808 Mead Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. The question I'd like to bring up, I've been a health and human rights advocate for 36 years. And the problem that I see here in Osceola County, you're going to see a new project. I want the residents of Osceola County to have first rights to those places. And the reason that is, is every day I have elderly that have no place to move because they can't afford it. I think we should give Osceola County residents first rights first before we bring them in from the other areas. And I see that, the same concerns. It's coming to travel with crossing 192 for transportation and making sure that there's some type of transportation that's allowable for these people. So that's a very big concern of mine.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I comment on that?
Please.
We, you know, as we've built a couple of projects in Osceola County, and this is, you know, it's in the city, but it's in the county. The Osceola County Human Services, we actually have not really agreement with them, it's more of a verbal agreement, but we actually will notify them prior to certificate of occupancy. And they will work on the leasing to get local residents first. So it is something that we have done and we will do for here, whether it's St. Cloud. I'm not sure if you guys are kind of working on your housing division now. So we don't have anybody in place right now that we could do that with, but we can work with Osceola County to make sure it's local Osceola County residents do come in first and are notified first. By law, we can't restrict that to them, but we can definitely let them know first.
Thank you. No, ma'am. You've already had your time, okay? Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Have discussion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So, I mean, this is a much more palatable ask than the first one for me, you know, where it was, and I don't know if you explained it in here to the audience about why it's, why you're asking for the loan because it makes your application to the lottery system move up in the ranks when you have like the local community participation. That's why you're asking for it. So I know when we initially entered into a contract and all these, all these deals, I don't know, are always kind of like, yeah, I don't love them because it's like, you know, we tie up the property for years and, you know, you're vying for this opportunity. I know it's a great thing if you get it, but, you know, so here we're like three years into this now.
Yep.
Three years into this now. But I know that when we negotiated this contract with you, I think we did a really good job trying to make it where we were still able to sell the property even though you have an option on it, but we could still market it if somebody else comes in and all that. So I think we're trying to keep the options open better than we have done historically. But the question I have is, based on one of the slides you had here, you're saying that this loan would be potentially in 2021?
So, yeah, the loan would be, we'd not need to be funded until certificate of occupancy. So if we, the timeline on this project is if we apply this year, which is in November 5th, that if we got the project, we'd basically, we'd know probably in August, September. I mean, we would actually close on the property. We'll know before that, but we would actually close August, September. We'll probably need about a month or so to get our permits because we'll have already been working on them. And then it would take about 12, 14 months of construction. So that's why it's 2021.
Well, so the point I wanted to make was if, that's a long time for us to hold up $560,000 out of a fund that we potentially may or may not give a loan to somebody, you know. I would like to have some kind of cancellation language in here, like, you know, I don't really know what the future holds. So let's say six months from now, something happens and we're like, oh my gosh, we need that $560,000. Is there an opportunity to like end this agreement?
Mr. Menzera.
Well, the base agreement has one last opportunity or application process for them under the base, the regular agreement related to the property. So if they go through this cycle and they do not get the lottery that you mentioned?
Right.
Then that agreement will now have to be renegotiated.
No, I'm saying they're going to make an, they're in application and then they're saying they're going to know August of next year.
No, they're going to close August of next year. They're going to...
Okay, so let's say you're going to know in February or March of next year. But what if something happens between now and then and we're like, oops, sorry, we can't give you this loan? It's, I would like some language in there that if some, you know, we would have the option to cancel it.
Well, I think part of the problem with that is the commitment for the local contribution has to be the part of the process.
I know, but they'll just have to lose their application.
Well, it's up to the council.
I mean, that's what I would like. If something were to come up, we had some emergency and we needed access to these funds. I mean, I think there ought to be an option in there that we could cancel it.
And I don't, Mr. Bannick's going to have to comment at that because I'm not sure how that is. I imagine that the enhancement or the points associated with the process are tied to the irrevocable commitment from the local government. So the language you're talking about would essentially be a revocable commitment, which may or may not get them the point enhancement that we talked about for the project.
Councilmember Trace.
Aren't these funds coming from that, OUC fund that we have that hasn't been touched in five years or however?
But I don't think, I mean, for me, I don't think it's right that we make it where we can't get out of a contract. If something comes up and we need to, you know, we've had experience in that here recently.
I think so.
So to answer Mr. Lyman's question, you have the Sadowski Fund. I don't agree with them sweeping that every year, the millions and billions of dollars that they pull out, that the state pulls out of that fund that is for affordable housing, it is for elderly and workforce housing. You know, I'm just one person, but I don't agree with them doing that. And just feel free to reach out to your state legislature, your state rep and your state and your...
Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. We can, yeah, go back. And then the walking distance, about a half a mile from this to the neighborhood Walmart and little grocery store there and gas station, so about half a mile, 20-minute walk. And then I just, I really like the commitment that we've put forward and I really do think we need affordable housing, especially elderly affordable housing in St. Cloud, in Osceola County in central Florida. So I really agree with the project and going from 18 years to a six-month payback, I think that's fantastic and really hope this moves forward.
Would you like to speak to any?
Trying to think about your question about how to handle that. You know, what you decide on as far as the loan and how you want to handle it as far as if you needed that money in an emergency relief or something. Our project can continue financially without the money. As I mentioned, the money is a commitment that we get from the local government. It's for Florida Housing. So you sign, you would sign, the mayor would sign a form that just says, you know, you committed the loan. There's no terms, it just says, you know, we're giving the loan. And then the terms were already given in a promissory note and so forth to be signed, you know, in 2021 at that time. So, you know, I guess it's kind of your decision. But if the form is signed and if for some reason we go to close and the money had to be used, we can still move forward. That's all I can, that's really all I can say. You know, there's nothing in the form that says that it's going to be valid, you know, by the time we close. So I don't want to know how else to handle that. Florida Housing would expect that they would want the commitment to last until our closing date, which is, I believe, is it June 30th in the contract? So, but, you know, if we, we're going to find out. It works a couple of different ways. They, Florida Housing puts out what's called a submitted report. It comes out 14 days after our, 14 business days after our application is submitted. So November 5th plus 14 business days, we're going to get our lottery numbers. If we're our lottery number 100 and we're not in the chase, then we can terminate contract. I can't put that in writing, but I can tell you and assure you that that, we're not going to hold you up on the contract any further or the loan commitment if we're not going to proceed with the project.
Well, I personally think there's a huge need for affordable elderly housing. It's just something I hear about all the time. And being able to find quality housing is just a huge, huge need. And I personally would not want to see us tie up or put language into this ordinance or contract that would jeopardize the potential. But like you said, if you're like number 100, then we terminate the agreement because it's not going to happen.
Correct.
And I think the amount of time that we've dealt with thus far, we can certainly wait just a little bit longer in light of the possible wind that we could get from this. And I would hope it would go through. I wouldn't want us to jeopardize personally. And I think we could be patient a little longer. And if an emergency comes up, you got to do what you got to do.
Mr. Menzera.
Just two points on that. The resolution that's in front of you is essentially a commitment by the city council to fund this loan. So it doesn't have any, any language that would allow the city to back out of it short of the contract going away and the project not commencing. The other part is remember, the funds that are being used to support this loan are coming from the St. Cloud OUC Business Development and Customer Retention Fund. So they are restricted for that. So you couldn't use those funds for any purpose. So if there was an emergency or you could, there'd be hoops that you'd have to jump through to be able to use those funds for any other purpose other than an economic development or a customer development fund or business development or customer development purpose. So those dollars may, wouldn't necessarily be available for, I guess they could be, but it would depend on what the use would be during the, during that process when you felt you wanted to use the $560,000 to do it. And also remember, when we brought this back before you, and for approval, the use of the funds, we talked to you about that at the last meeting. The approval was for that fiscal year when we anticipated the payment from being made. So there isn't anything that would prohibit you from using the balance of that fund for any other purpose between now and 2021.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion by council? Then I'd like to move that we adopt this resolution, Resolution 219-195R, as is stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Member Matheny?
Unfortunately, without cancellation language, it's a no for me.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have number two.
Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Sewell Point Contract, The City Lobbyists.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. If you, council remembers back on July 29th at the City Council Budget Workshop, the City Council provided consensus to replace the current lobbying contract with Sewell Point and replace it with a contract with Gray Robinson Federal Lobbying. Let me switch this slide. Right now shows the current cost. There's actually a Scravenger's error on the Sewell Point contract. Actually, this year it's 73, 422, and then next year it would be 75, 627. There's a 3% increase in the Sewell Point contract annual increase. And so I want the council to think of two things. Number one, the costs that we're spending on lobbying. The second thing is if we do decide to terminate, the council does decide to terminate the Sewell contract, there's a 30-day notice to terminate. The contract is with the City Council, and that's why I brought it back before you for discussion and possible action.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? We'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Please. I'll give you opportunity. Ms. Crumpler, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I don't know what the Sewell organization is or what this is really about. I can't figure it out. Maybe somebody could enlighten me. somebody could enlighten me.
Mr. Barrett?
What is it?
Mr. Barrett, Bill Barrett. Mr. Last our city manager.
Sure. Gray Robinson is a contract with Gray Robinson for, for state lobbying. Osceola Legislative Effort is a lobbying effort between Osceola County, Kissimmee, the School Board of Osceola County and St. Cloud. Sewell Point is owned and operated by Mr. Bill Barrett, who's our city lobbyist. And then there's a second Gray Robinson. That's for a federal lobbyist for next year is proposed in the budget.
I'm very confused because I thought we had three lobbyists. I thought we had, I didn't know the name was Sewell, Mr. Barrett?
That's his company.
And then I thought we had one with Dean Cannon.
That's Gray Robinson.
That's Gray Robinson.
That's Gray Robinson. So that's Dean Cannon. And then I thought you had one with something called Ole.
That's, that's Osceola Legislative Effort.
Yeah, so you had those three, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so what's the, what's the, what's the idea here?
The, the council directed me at a city council budget workshop to replace Sewell Point's contract with a contract with Gray, additional contract with Gray Robinson for federal lobbying.
Great. So you want to give Gray Robinson the money from Sewell, is what you're saying?
That's what I was directed to do by the city council.
I somehow missed that whole thing because I watched the workshops and I thought the last thing that I saw up here that you guys talked about was the topics that you wanted to cover in, maybe I missed it.
No.
The topics you wanted to cover for lobbyists.
In July 29th, that was the lobbying that we talked about, I think, last workshop. We talked about lobbying efforts. In other words.
And I thought you gave them a list of topics and you wanted them to choose, correct?
That's correct.
All right. What I thought, well, the idea was to keep the lobbyists that we had in place. I want to say, I, I don't know what this, where this came from, but if the council wants to do that, I, I listened carefully because first of all, I'm never, I'm never usually in favor of lobbyists. So I always question, why do we need to spend that money? But I have been convinced since I've been coming to these city meetings that the one that you guys are trying to get rid of apparently is very effective. You had presentations from those three organizations. I believe it was at a workshop, but it might have been a meeting where they said, what were their accomplishments? And the way I, the way I heard it was this particular person has accomplished a lot for us over the years. And the way I heard it, the Dean Cannon group, the guy was very articulate. He really knew what he was doing and would be a great benefit in Tallahassee. And then the group that I thought was completely ineffective and did little to nothing for us was the Ole group because five years ago, they, they did something and they haven't done anything since. So that, that's my opinion. And I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear what were the accomplishments of this group that you're trying to get rid of. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have to. Come on up to the podium. You should know that by now.
Anyway, you know who I am.
State your name and address for the record.
Terrence Lyman, 5013 White Ward Way. And that's here in St. Cloud again. Gray Robinson. I can only tell from a personal experience, counting of hours and everything else, like she just quoted, you really want to know what a lobbyist does for the city. And the city should be able to review what they do every year and have accountability. I personally ran into an issue with an attorney firm. And I would be very careful. Why can't you choose somebody local here in St. Cloud? I mean, if you want to represent St. Cloud, wouldn't you want to have a lobbyist from St. Cloud? I mean, why would you choose somebody from Orlando? I'm, what, because you're a big law group? Does that mean everybody goes to white in case when they want something done? No. So I would really look at that. They charge enormous rates, hourly rates. And you might be paying a lot more than what you're getting back. So I would look at that.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, we will entertain discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Trace.
Mr. Cooper, are you talking first?
Yeah, let me, I didn't push the button, but I'll do it now. Could I, can I interject? Bill, tell me the difference whether, I guess Gray Rob, or not Gray Robinson, the, for the state, not the state, for the federal. I mean, the federal.
The cost is $90,000 a year for a federal lobbyist.
But that's only going to give us down the road, five or six years before we're going to find out to make some money for us.
It's my understanding.
It's going to take a long time.
It, you know, you know how it works.
Every year for four or five years before you might get some grant money through the state. To me, that's, 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 that's $560,000. They just threw away, didn't throw away, but you, you loaned it for six months. But I don't know. It's not, it doesn't seem good money, common sense money, to spend $90,000 every year for five or six years to see what you're going to get. I would, I would recommend we cancel that one and keep the three that we've got right now for one year and let's see where we're at. And if you don't bring any muster from OUC or Ole, excuse me, then we'll, we'll kill it. If we haven't done anything for Mr. Sewell, tell us what you're doing. Tell us what you've done for us. I think he's done quite a bit for us. And I think Gray Robinson's done a lot. So that's my thought. That's my process where I'm coming from. I just can't see that we're going to spend $90,000 for every year right now.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Councilmember Trace?
To Mr. Lyman's point, you know, anytime you have someone that, a, a, a firm or a service that, you know, provides some sort of benefit, if you don't give them clear direction, then you end up spinning your wheels and wasting time and wasting money. So that's just one thing I want to make sure, anytime we talk about lobbying efforts, that we as a council and as a city give clear direction towards whomever we use for those services to make sure that we're all pushing in the same direction and trying to accomplish whatever goals we're going after.
Yes, sir.
And then one point just about this in general. I mean, we've had some of these firms around for, for a long time. And, you know, instead of just kind of asking ad hoc kind of what were, what were some of the accomplishments, at some point in the future, we should probably just go out for an RFQ, request for qualifications and just kind of get, just go out kind of to the market of if, if there's a, a local St. Cloud group, I don't know if there is, or if it's central Florida, or if it's someone else that, you know, could provide those, those same benefits, show the, the benefits that they've given to other cities, counties, municipalities, and then, you know, make those selections based on, you know, the qualifications of those firms instead of just kind of continuing on with, with some of the, the, the current contracts that we have. So I just want to give those comments out there and then just kind of welcome debate as we talk through these contracts.
Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Askew?
So I wasn't here for the financial budget meeting. Sorry about that. I, I, actually, I like all three of them personally, but the one, the $90,000, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure what that's going to do in the federal level for us. You know, unless we have, and I'm with Mr. Trace, unless we have a clear, concise agenda for the federal government in Washington DC, I think we're a little premature here to start jumping into that.
Yes.
And if it's water we're going after or whatever we're, we're, we're doing, I think that that's something we need to, have we discussed anything? I mean, I wasn't here for that meeting, but have we discussed anything for Washington DC, what we're going after? Or are we just getting them and just?
And I, I spoke to two subject matter expert, Mr. Brian Wheeler and Todd Swingle. And for the federal money, one of the things we were talking about was water, alternative water supply. It's probably about two years right now before we can ask for that money. And I'm not going to say the abbreviation because I don't know if it's correct, but, but Brian had told me that and so did Todd. The other thing is there is some opportunity for some FEMA money for our public safety complex. But again, it's a multi-year process. You know, you have to get the project out there, discuss it, walk through the halls of Congress. We have an election coming up next year. So we did discuss those things. And I actually have a white paper. I, I will get you the draft tomorrow, kind of walk through federal, state lobbying.
Okay. Well, the $90,000 doesn't seem that much now if you're going after a $40 million safety area for our police department. Sure. It just seemed like we were throwing that out there, but I didn't really hear a concise answer of what we're going to Washington DC for, so.
Well, part of our discussion was, you know, it's, it's rather frustrating that, you know, all three of our lobbyists work, you know, the Tallahassee politicians. And it just seemed like that we have a duplication of effort that is not necessary. And certainly when I've been on my trips to Tallahassee, the group that had the best connections, that seemed to be doing the most professional job that I feel would return, the best return for the dollar would be continuing with the Gray Robinson. Now, the Ole group gives us the opportunity, which I think is significant, to work with the city of Kissimmee and Osceola County in securing funds. And they've had a very successful history of securing funding for 192, significant funding for the schools. And when we secure funding for the schools, that's all of our schools. That's our kids. And, and then plus we're working in partnership with the, with our own local community. And so I thought that was, you know, a tremendous opportunity for us to work together. And then the return on the dollars has been tremendous, in my opinion. Sewell, you know, I like Mr. Barrett, but I just think what we're doing is we're duplicating the effort that we're, we're getting from and could be getting and should be getting from Gray Robinson. And I just feel like they're more qualified to do the work because of, of their connections and their influence in Tallahassee. And so that was why, at that point, when we were looking at the budget, that we dropped Sewell contract. And we did not, you know, we talked about, should we add federal lobbying dollars? You know, there's just a lot, you know, when you look at, you know, there's over $900 million in transportation and rail infrastructure grants that are available through USDOT on the federal level, $1 billion in public safety equipment and training grants that are available through FEMA, $500 million in public works and flood control grants at US DOC, $1 billion in addiction and opioid treatment prevention grants. And we all know that that is a huge burning issue that we certainly need to be addressing right here in our own city and county. So I would like to see us, you know, begin the process of building a relationship and begin pursuing, because you said it's a process. It's not just a one, a one-time shot in the dark. But to continue to fund all of those, to me, doesn't make sense.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Everyone keeps forgetting that Ole got us the Turnpike interchange two, two, three years ago. I mean, that's like a $9 million. That's, no, it wasn't. We got it since I've been on council. It was two years ago. We got the completed Turnpike interchange. There, it's in design right now. So, I mean, we would not have gotten that without Mr. John Johnston, his relationships at the Turnpike. I mean, so that is, I mean, to me, they get a pass for five years. If they didn't get anything else, they got us a $9 million interchange, so.
It's going to be more than that. It's over 20 million. Any other discussion?
My motion is that we continue with what we approved at the workshop, that we move forward with Gray Robinson, Ole, and Gray Robinson on the federal level. I'd like to make a motion. How do I, what do I need to do on that, Mr. Manzera?
Well, the only thing before you, only potential action before you is based on the discussion at the workshop was, as Mr. Sturgeon pointed out, was to replace one of your existing local or state lobbyists with a potential federal lobbyist. So the one contract with Sewell Point has a termination provision in it of 30 days, as Mrs. Sturgeon pointed out, which is why this is on your agenda. So if you're going to follow through with the discussion that was at that budget, meaning the action item at this point would be to, to, Mr. Mayor, would be a motion to terminate that agreement and give the 30-day notice under the, under that contract with Sewell Point.
Then I also move that we terminate this contract and move with the provisions there in this that are before us. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Nay.
Councilmember Askew?
Nay.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you. Mr. Manzera.
Well, I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one. I'm just, I apologize. You'll notice on your information section when you get there that the Stevens Plantation Dependence Special District, meaning we were going to try to have that on October 3rd, but it needed to be moved up one day to accommodate scheduling. So it's, we've asked that it be occur on Wednesday, October 2nd at the same time right here. So I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Yeah, we corrected that. I'll go over that again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manzera. Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recognize the fire chief to come up and talk about our new fire rescue cadet program. Chief Silvestres.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager. Just want to make you all aware of a program that we're going to be starting here shortly with the new school year, and it's a cadet program through the Florida Fire Chiefs Association, where we reach out to young youths from 14 age, 14, age 14 to 21 to bring them in and start getting them familiar with the fire service and to hope that they take on that career. And it, I did it in Claremont and it was a great success. The kids were awesome. They help with special events. They learn what our job's all about. They have competitions throughout the state with other cadet programs. And I think it's just a really good idea to reach out to the community and bring the youth into the fire service. So just wanted to make you aware that we're pushing forward with that program.
Awesome. Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Awesome. That's incredible.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I have one other item, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Over the last couple of weeks, I've got several concerned citizens who've addressed me about the parking situation at the new park at 901 Virginia. And subsequently, I've taken the following action. I've, I've directed staff to install no parking signs on the west side of Virginia. We have a new bathroom trailer that's arriving this week. So we're replacing the portlets with that air-conditioned or heated trailer. So we won't have the concern with the smells that people were complaining about. And we're actually monitoring traffic and parking counts right now. We've got the Parks and Rec Department doing that. Somebody did a nice presentation and I guess wanted to give both sides of the story. And you guys have that in your, we put it in your, your lockers. And we also reached out to the school board to talk about a shared use agreement for the parking area, which should be south of the park in the school board properties. We haven't heard back from them, but we are reaching out to them. People have been on vacation in the hurricane, but we are doing that. So I just want to let you know we're being proactive. We're monitoring the situation and, and we're taking care of it what we can at this level and then hopefully we get that shared use agreement. But that's a good thing that we have a, a nice park that people are using.
Excellent.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Last meeting when we were talking about the coal, coal ash people, the attorney that I wanted, the environmental attorney that I wanted to, that I spoke about, I wanted to hire, was going to not, Manzera, she would not get into it. I wanted you to be autonomous. Don't, don't be making decisions of another attorney locally in Orlando. I wanted somebody, I said, somebody that would be an environmental specialist. Now, if we need to put an RFQ or something like that, that's what I'd like to do. That's what I wanted to do. That's what I thought I'd done. So if I haven't, then I need to back up and do it. How far are we from what I'm talking and saying?
Well, first of all, we, we were responding to what the city council wanted to do, not one particular council.
I understand that.
So the, the second piece is, we, we did initiate a review of potential attorneys and consultants that could come in and be retained by the city. We were then contacted by Waste Connection, who asked to have another meeting, which we tried, which was supposed to happen before tonight, but for the hurricane, it had to be postponed until tomorrow and, and do that. And so I talked to Mr. Sturgeon and we agreed. And so I talked to Mr. Sturgeon, and we agreed that it would be worth, it would be in the city's best interest to have one more meeting, decide where they were gonna be before the city moved forward with it. I would ask everybody to remember one thing. This city council has done absolutely everything it can to address this issue. You have prohibited the delivery of leach aid into the system. You cannot do anything about the JED landfill. That is completely without, out of your jurisdiction, regardless of what anybody wants to ask you to do. That is not, you have no authority over that. So you have stopped the delivery of the leach aid from that facility. There's no lawsuit has been filed against the city as of this date. So there really, you really, there isn't any other action that the city council can take at this point to do this. If you were, if a lawsuit had been filed, then what we would, what we would, we do, and we anticipate that it likely will be, that we want, that at that point, Mr. Sturgeon will work with, with either our office or he'll go through whatever process he wishes to do to bring back potential recommendations as to attorneys and consultants that can, can move forward with this. But at this point, really, we're waiting, we're waiting, and we're waiting for this last, this last meeting tomorrow. And then if there is an option that's available to the city, we don't know what they're gonna offer. If there's an option that's available to the city that we think is consistent with the prior action of this city council, which you stated clearly, then we'll bring that back to you. If there are not, then at that point, we'll be in full-fledged litigation with Waste Connections.
So that will be environmentalist attorney that we're gonna look for?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. Let's just, I'll make sure. Okay. And of course, tonight, all these people from the coal ash, they were up here standing, and they wanted to make sure that they got their wishes, or they didn't want any coal ash to be brought into the state of Florida. They wanted to keep everything in, in the Florida itself contained. In other words, if we've got coal ash here, we'll take care of it, or we'll store it, or keep it, you know, someplace until we find a different venue to get, next, sir. Try and get it where we can get better electric and, and things like that. But I think there, what the coal ash people are asking for is for this, this council to come up and say, we don't wanna have coal ash brought from out of the state of Florida.
Well, and typically what that happens, again, that's an act, an action that's outside of your jurisdiction. So this city could consider or ask that. Typically, what we've had in the past is the city council has directed the mayor or asked the mayor and directed, or directed the city manager to send a letter to those folks that have jurisdictional control over those issues, supporting such an action.
Okay.
In this case, it would be the state, obviously. You heard some language about there's a proposed bill out there. I don't, I don't know if there's a sponsor for that bill, but we certainly can track that down. And the city council at some point can send a letter to both the Speaker of the House and the State Senate President, and ask that they do something about this, and the governor.
Okay. I'm asking the other council members here to take a look at it. Give me, give me some response to what I'm saying.
I certainly don't have a problem with supporting a bill that we've heard about tonight that says no coal ash in the state of Florida, and then supporting that.
Yes, sir.
But until I see the bill and read the bill in its final form, I'm not gonna make any kind of blanket statement here personally until we get a little further along in what we're actually looking at. But I support that principle. Would anyone else like to speak to that?
I'm sorry. We could look at, I've just seen this bill. We can research the bill, and we can bring back a formal resolution for the city council to adopt. We've done that before, supporting resolutions.
Could we do that? Would the rest of the council have any problem with that, or?
I'd support it.
Yeah.
Anybody that doesn't, and he doesn't support it, raise your hand if you don't, you know, if you do, you're okay.
We'll draft a resolution, you'll bring it back, and we can tweak the wording depending on what the council wants to do.
Thank you.
Okay, wait a minute. Hang on. I'm not done yet.
I was thinking, Mr. Manzares.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I know it's unusual, but.
I thought you were stopping me. I was like, whoa, don't hold me. Alright.
There's a limit.
I told you I was gonna wind up today. Alright, last, last question. Bill, you and I talked about, I've heard some complaints down here on New York Avenue. The bricks from 10th to 13th Street, they've got some potholes right now. I can show you tomorrow. We'll walk, I'll show you. There's two of them right now. They've already patched them and brought some dirt, sand there, but it's gone back down again. So, can you have an engineer, a firm, somebody that, somebody can take a look at it to make sure that Cathcart did what they were supposed to have fulfilled their con, their contract?
So, today, we, we talked to both Cathcart and Osceola Engineering, and Mr. Moody stands behind his engineering for the project. All the tolerances that I reviewed, and had Mr. Felblinger, who's a PE certified engineer, is familiar with the problems, and he's working those problems right now. But like I said, I truly believe, is there some issues? Absolutely. But I think Public Works Director's on top of it. And, you know, we're comfortable that those tolerances are according to the contract, according to the engineering drawings.
Well, I think you and I talked about the, the variances between the bricks that are 80 years old, you know, and they just don't mesh, and they won't fit in tight. So you're getting two inches on one end, you know, the sand, there's two inches of, of distance, and down at the bottom, there's three quarters of an inch. So you've got nothing but sand to covering about a half of a spot there. So, these bricks, what we've got in front, is 10 times better and smoother than what we've got there.
I think what we also talked about, not to put words in your mouth, but moving forward, that maybe we should use the.
I don't think we wanna do that again.
The manufactured brick instead of the.
It's much smoother, and it tightens, it goes tight and together. So you don't get the, the movement, I think.
I can ask Mr. Felblinger to have the representative from Cathcart and go out and walk the streets and double-check everything.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm asking the rest of the council members and saying, we've only got three months left, a warranty left. November, whatever, two and a half, three months.
Yes, sir.
I wanna make sure that if there is a problem that comes another six months after that, I want to be aware, be aware that I'm telling you, we've got problems, and it's getting worse now. In the last five months, it's worse now than it was when they first did it the first month. It's rougher. It's, it's giving and sinking. Dave, I think you can walk out in front of your street there, and you can't tell me it's better than what it was the first one, the original one.
You want me to answer that?
Not a whole lot worse.
Sure. Matter of fact, I got on the phone with Bill, I think it was probably yesterday or something.
I asked him to walk out of his store.
It's, and, and there might be something, when Cathcart came the very first time, and I asked him, when they started, when the bricks were done, they were putting the sand down, not to say that I'm a brick expert or anything. I did ask him, I'm like, is there anything in that sand that would protect the water from dripping in? He said, no. So, I think it was engineered that way, which is fine. But I think just outside my building, it's the part that's curved in the new bricks is where it seems to be exposing more.
It's giving, yes.
The old bricks, which my customers love, they're a little bumpy, but it gives that look of like you're actually driving down a.
I'm not saying that, I just think it's worse. Yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, there's, there's definitely some, some spots. But I think it has to do, and I'm not an engineer, but I think it has to do with some of the sand being washed away, and if they can look at that, it'll probably solve a lot of the problems.
Bill, I'm just saying, be aware. Mr. Cooper is saying there is a problem. I think there is. We need to look at it. Somebody with a fine-tooth comb besides myself, whether, other than Mr. Moody and Mr. Kevin. Kevin does a good job, but, you know, we, we need somebody that, put, somebody that puts those bricks down on a regular basis. Could we have those, somebody that does that on a regular basis?
Cathcart's the best, one of the best in the business. So I mean, I, you know, like, I think the first crack, they should be able to come out and defend their product. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Said that, first thing, Cathcart's probably the best in the business, and I think we should give them first crack at coming out and seeing if they see something that.
They've already been here once or twice now to patch just, I think, two different times, right?
Kevin, is it twice? Yes.
See, I kinda watch, you know? So, alright, that was, that's where I'm coming from. You just need to stay on it before the warranty is gone.
Thank you.
And you'll check it out and let me know.
And will you guys do a bond punch-out walk at the end of the year?
I think we did a.
Before the warranty period expires, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so if you, if you find latent issues, then yeah, handle it, and then if they, whatever they fix.
Alright, now you and I had talked about where the drains are at.
Mm-hmm.
You're putting some kind of a silica seal around it, and it's washing out or cracking or breaking.
I'm gonna have Kevin come up and talk about that.
Y'all need to fix that with something, some kind of better than what it is.
Kevin Felblinger, Acting Public Services Director. We are about ready to go out and re-sand the, the whole area down through there. We handed out flyers earlier this week for the affected businesses. We scheduled to be able to come by after hours, so we're not gonna impact the businesses that are out there. And as part of that, we are doing a test sealer on, to be able to try to put something in there with the sand, to be able to try to prevent it from happening again, because this is, there's gonna be a continuing, a continuous, ongoing maintenance problem if we are, if we are, if we have to come back and keep on re-sanding this area. Unfortunately, I said, is, is part of, you know, with the stormwater runoff, it is taking some of the sand with it every time it rains. And so it is something that we are looking at. We received something from a geotech firm that said that it should help stabilize it. And so we are doing, going to do a test patch after we go out and sand the entire road. We are doing test patches to be able to try to have a sealer to be able to try to make sure that the, the sand is not washed away. So there is something that we've been given to be able to try to prevent this from happening.
So Dave, we may, we may have to, for Pennsylvania Avenue and Massachusetts, we may have to look out, put some kind of a soil cement before we put the sand on there.
Right.
You know, so, wouldn't that help?
Well, like I said, either that, or the, the sealer that we're using, if, if it works where the sand is washed away, there is something else that, that we would be looking at.
No, I'm talking about underneath. We've only got just sand right now, and that, that loam or whatever they put down and compact it. But we may have to put some kind of cement mixture.
Well, right now, the, the, it's not being shifted, it's not the, it's not the base, it's the sand, they're, they're sand. Like I said, there, there is a, a liner between the, 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 the base and the sand. There, there already is a, a liner down there for, for this, this product.
Okay.
It's just the, the sand that's in between the bricks is washed away.
Right. Alright, and the city is gonna pay for the sand and, sand and seal. We're, we're, it's, we're on the hook. It's not Cathcart, right?
No, sir, it's not. Like I said, we are gonna be paying for re-sanding it, but like I said, the, the sealer that we have, like I said, the people we, we discussed it with, the, the sample they gave us is only about a gallon worth of stuff. So it's, it spreads five to one, so it's gonna be, it's not gonna be the whole road rent down there. But our test area was provided by a, by a firm to be able to try.
Okay, but why didn't, why didn't the sand and seal should have lasted when they, when they put it on?
We didn't, we didn't seal the sand. This is just, there was a sand put between the bricks. Like I said, the, the sealer we're putting down is something that was not included with the original project.
May wanna do that for the next, next project.
Yes, sir. Oh, definitely. I said, if, if.
We're learning, we're learning, right?
Yes, sir. And I said, if, if it works here, we're gonna do it for the rest of the road to be able to make sure it doesn't impact that. And if, if it works well, we are not, we will include it with the next project. Yes, sir.
Okay. Kevin, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, finally. Thank you. I'll let you go now.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Mr. Askew is not an engineer, but he sits between two of them. So it's like.
Oh, you don't have to tell me twice.
A rose between two thorns.
Well, first, I wanna congratulate Mr. Felblinger and his crew for the sandbag operations, because I heard nothing but kudos with the hurricane. I actually got a text that was really sweet about someone that just got out of a hospital, and they, you know, contacted the city, and they needed help, and the city delivered the sandbags and did all this stuff. And I said, gosh, I didn't even know we did that. I'm like, that's amazing. You know, that was really sweet. So, the other thing was Hurricane Dorian, you know, we dodged a bullet. I spent 24 hours in the county emergency operations center. So, thank you, City of St. Cloud Emergency Operations Center for your, your hard work. I know, I know how difficult it is, 'cause I spent 12-hour shifts, and, and I know you guys were there for much longer. And I stopped by, and they had a much better setup, big stack of movies, a bunch of food. They had a ton of food. But, um, thank you for, for all that you've done. And then the last thing is, the St. Cloud High School Homecoming Parade is back, and it's this weekend, on Saturday. I'm really sad that I am not gonna be able to be in attendance. I had a previous commitment already. I was gonna bust out my Letterman jacket and see if it fit. Probably not.
Yeah, it gonna fit.
But, uh, you know, I'm really sad that I'm gonna miss that, 'cause that's my alma mater, and I loved homecoming back in the day and stuff. And so I love that the parade's coming back. So that's it.
Mr. Trace? Councilmember Trace?
To echo Deputy Mayor Matheny's comments, I'd like to thank staff for how they handled everything for the storm, and everyone's leadership, and keeping everyone calm, and doing a good job with sandbags. City manager, when, when's the next time we're discussing legislative priorities?
I will get you a draft tomorrow. It's a very rough draft. And I actually put rationale and I make a recommendation. And then, and, 'cause we have to have the documents to the legislature by the 15th. So I'd like to have a, two or three weeks to get those documents done and review those before we submit them. But I will get you something tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, on the Turnpike Interchange, there was a, FDUT held a meeting probably a month, month and a half ago, on the Turnpike Interchange, and they kind of presented a whole new layout than what we had before. Do we know if that's going to affect what was funded for Kissimmee Park Road Interchange? Or is that gonna happen first, and then whatever they change would be from there?
Can I answer that?
I don't.
From my, from my understanding is that we have the commitment that we got that they're gonna fund the other half of the interchange, and we were obligated to a certain dollar amount, and that's all we're obligated to. It's like $2 million, and we've had that in an account for a couple, three years, I think. But, you know, regardless of what the costs are, if they rebuild it, if they do this, I know they had a bunch of different options and layouts for it. The last one, I think the preferred one, maybe Mr. Felblinger has more updated, but it was like coming down and tying into NOLTE. Which is why I had brought up that comment about maybe we changed the zoning inside Stevens Plantation to capture some of that. But regardless of what the dollar amount is, our obligation was the $2 million. So.
My worry was now they're starting over with a whole new layout, and that's, it's a, it's a federal and a state project. That's 10 years from now, once you start kind of the.
They're not in a 10-year timeline.
No.
They are not in a 10-year timeline. They're, they're designing right now.
Okay.
Kevin Felbinger, Acting Public Works Director. Just to let you all know, I actually have a meeting with the, with the Turnpike Authority on Monday at 11 o'clock to be able to discuss the altern, the different alternatives. So like I said, so we should have a better idea here in the next week or so where they're at. You're right, they started with, I think it was like 24, I think they started with originally, and they, they look, they're different areas. The biggest issue they had is the existing half a bridge right there. They were having a hard time making a full bridge because of stacking. And so like I said, so that, that, that's the reason why they, they looked at trying to move them to, to different locations as opposed to try to build right there because of the stacking issues they were having to be able to make it a full interchange. It was, it was very challenging with the, with the, the space that was, the space we had there.
Yeah, 'cause we have stacking issues now in the morning and the afternoon coming out of the interchange.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It's elaborate.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. And it's just.
The plans are elaborate.
But then you start over in eminent domain, and it just ends up being years and years.
It, it is something, but they, they, they do have a commitment to be able to try to meet the timeframes. They're wanting to start construction, I believe, in 2022, I believe, is, is what they were wanting to actually be.
It's still in train.
So I just want to voice my concern?
Yes, sir. No, I understand what I said, but we do have a meeting with them on, on Monday to be able to discuss it.
Okay. Thank you.
Just commenting on that, part of the issue was if they move up just that short distance and tie in the Turnpike Exchange on NOLTE Road, it'll be a bigger exchange. Kissimmee Park would, would be closed. The bridge will still be there to go over. But it's, it's cheaper, and it would be a bigger, nicer interchange, and it would also allow them the opportunity, 'cause there are distance requirements going down to the end of Canoe Creek Road in the future, and putting in another exchange there. But if they leave it where it's at, they couldn't do that. And so, there's just a lot of good reasons for moving it up to NOLTE Road. And so, I think we'll all be pleased when we hear that. At least I think it's gonna be a good idea.
My turn?
Mr. Askew?
Can we, and Kevin, on that meeting, can you get us, you don't have to come up, I'm just gonna ask you. If you can send us some information on that, and I've, I've heard the latest with, 2022 was, it was going farther up, and I'm like, whoa. And now I understand the NOLTE thing. You brought it before, and I'm, just could not picture it in my head, and the mayor, it just dropped in. I think we need to start looking at the land development codes for NOLTE, which we've been talking about really for the last three years, so.
Ding, ding, ding.
This might be the time, as I stare at the planners out there, this might be the time to start grasping that, because that's gonna be huge for the city, so. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. And, and anything I do receive on, on, on Monday, I'll make sure we get the city manager. get the city manager, so he can distribute, distribute out to everybody.
Okay. I have nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Askew. I've received a request from the Education Foundation, we have been very generous in giving scholarships, they were just wanting to know that we had the support of the council, and allowing one of the recipients of a $2,000 scholarship named Joshua Blackmore, he has been such a sharp gifted kid, he's got all of his tuition funded, which is where the scholarships are designated supposed to go, and he was asking if he could use that money to own his housing expense, campus housing, I certainly didn't have a problem, but I've, the education wanted me to come and ask the council if that were, if that were a problem, is that a-
I don't have an issue with that.
Can we do that?
Well, I don't think that agreement, it's been around for a lot of years, and I haven't looked at it in a long time, but we certainly can, I suggest that you let, unless we find there's a problem, or something that specifically prohibits that in the agreement, I don't think there is, I don't think it defines scholarship that specific, I think scholarships are very often used for housing related to, you know, higher education, so I don't think there's anything specific in it, but if the council's okay with it, we can move forward with it, we'll look at the agreement, and if there's a problem, we'll bring it back to the council.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Having three kids in college right now, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Now, this is a very deserving young man, who has just excelled at his work, and it's good that we can be a part of what, of helping to fund his education. I, too, would like to thank all of the city staff for all of their work during the potential hurricane, and, you know, the sandbag crew, I mean, they were just excellent also, and just thank all of you for your hard work, going the extra mile, and it could have been a disastrous experience, but I think you were as well-prepared as any city could have been, so thank you for what you've done. With that, brings us to our information section and reports section. Thursday, September the 19th, 2019, the city council workshop will be at 6:00 PM here at City Hall Council Chambers. Thursday, September the 26th, there will be a city council meeting at 6:30 here at City Hall, and then, a change on your agenda needs to be set up Thursday, it'll be Wednesday, October the 2nd, a Stevens Plantation DSD meeting at 6 o'clock here at City Hall Council I issued a proclamation in recognition of National Pollution Prevention Week for your